Welcome to the March 11, 2013 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items and no votes will be taken on these items. Tonight, there are seven items on our agenda, and public comment is allowed in a germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a couple of public comment cards and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Suti, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind calling the first item.
Our first item is discussion of RZ 1218, to amend Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2, AG1, agricultural district as it pertains to fencing. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Here we are. Okay. We're sort of going to look at all three of these proposed text amendments together, RZ 1218, 1219, and 1301. They all sort of associate together. As an overview, the mayor and council approved changes to the AG1 district regarding fencing on March 19, 2012. Since that time, it has come to the council's attention that the new requirements may not be appropriate for all properties zoned AG1. Staff was directed to research how to amend the ordinances to allow other types of fencing other than equestrian, but still keep the overall feel of the equestrian rural nature of the city. Now, in terms of RZ 1218, fencing within the AG1 district, pardon me, we're proposing the following, that when lots of butt exterior streets, equestrian-type fencing will be required. However, it provides for privacy or non-equestrian fences along the rear or side property lines of exterior streets, in which case they would be required to plant a visual buffer so that they can't be seen from the public street throughout the year. And incidentally, you should have a cheat sheet in front of you, so as I start walking through exterior streets and interior streets, you can follow along as well. In terms of interior or platted subdivisions and non-subdivision lots, number one, it allows the community development director to have approval of non-equestrian fencing with a maximum height of 55 inches from average grade along the front of an interior subdivision streets of platted subdivision lots. And what this means is that if an interior street, if they do not want the equestrian-style fencing, when we discussed this with the planning commission, their solution was to have the community development director review on a case-by-case basis, rather than just listing all the different types of fences that might be allowed. Because you might have an instance where you had already four or five homeowners that had put up a wrought iron fence, for instance, and so it might be wise, under that circumstance, to approve a change to the four-board fence, but to require that it be wrought iron, so as to continue that fence line along. So they thought a case-by-case would work better, and hence they decided that the community development director should have that review authority, so that's why you're seeing this here. It also, and again, we're in interior streets, it allows any type of fencing along the side and rear of lots within subdivisions. The maximum height shall not exceed eight feet. So just to review again with you, if you're in exterior street, and we define exterior streets later on here, but those are essentially your main roads, you will be required to have a four-board fence, and if you don't want that, you would follow the normal process, which means that you would go to the BZA. You could have for your side and your rear fence, you could have whatever you wanted, but if it were opaque, you would have to have it vegetated, so that no one could see it. And if you're on, you could have a different fence of your lot boarded on the side or the rear of a main exterior street, you would be allowed to have a non-horseboard fence. But again, if it were opaque, it would have to be vegetated. So that gives some flexibility. On the interior streets, equestrian fence or else, a review by, approval by the community development director. And in terms of side and rear fences, whatever you wanted. And again, if it were opaque, we would want it covered with vegetarian. Yes, sir?
Is that review by your office a fairly simple, just come in and meet with you and schedule a time and show?
Absolutely. Come in, show us what you're doing, and I would just want to see what was going on in the neighborhood, just to make an informed...
Or maybe even meet out there at the property and try and look at it.
Absolutely, that's right. We could sort of see what everyone else was doing, and we would want it to be sort of in accordance. But it would give them an easy way, but someone reviewing it on a case-by-case to see what was going on. Yes, sir?
If you go back one page, I apologize.
Yes.
Is there a way to bring it back?
Oh.
Sorry.
I did a line, I'm sorry.
Obviously, we say in that first line, exterior street, equestrian-type fencing will be required. Are we talking about lots that do not have any fencing as well? I have to put it up, just to make sure we're not saying that. I just want to clarify.
When they're developed, that's what we would see.
So when they go ahead and put fencing up, then it's required to be that, but if they don't have any, then that means they don't need to put it there.
That's right. Okay, so...
I've got one question, Kathy.
Yes.
It says within the AG1 district, does that mean if it's zoned AG1, what happens if it's zoned like CUP? Does that mean...
That's a very good question, and that's why we have RZ 1219, is to handle exactly those circumstances. Because RZ 1218 just deals with the AG1 district, but we realized that there were other residential-type districts that also need coverage, and that takes place under a different section in our ordinance. So from a technical point of view, we had to split them up, so therefore, that's why you're seeing two separate ordinances, both of which pretty well say the same thing in most cases, but it was a technicality. Okay, any more questions on RZ 1? And again, you've got that cheat sheet that should help you go through that. All right, I'm going to move on to RZ 1219, which is fencing within all zoning districts, and this really covers our CUPs that could look like an AG1, but they are a CUP, and therefore, to cover it with the same type of requirements that we're proposing for the AG1, we had to write a separate text amendment. And essentially, this is saying exactly what we're requiring in the AG1 in terms of privacy or non-equestrian fences along the rear or side property lines, in which case they'll need a visual buffer. It allows me, as a community development director, to approve non-equestrian fencing, and then it also allows any type of fencing along the side or rear of platted subdivision or non-subdivision lots, unless adjacent to an exterior street, at which time, if it's adjacent to an exterior street, an opaque fence is going to have to have that vegetative requirement. This section also prohibits the use of chain-link fencing along right-ofways, with the exception of stormwater facilities or recreational courts, and also prohibits the use of barbed wire, with the exception of legitimate agricultural uses. And both of these two bullet points are essentially cleanup in our text, and that's why you see them in here. I'm moving on to RZ 1302, which we refer to exterior streets, but we did not have a definition of exterior streets, so this text amendment establishes a definition. And we propose the following, an exterior street means a street, either public or private, that is not located within a subdivision or final plaque. Are there any questions? And of course, you've got the summary, which is right there.
Question.
Yes.
I think in one of your other topics here, we're getting into definitions. We're going to define the difference between fences and walls?
Robin's going to look that up.
We don't have defined, we don't have a definition for fences or walls, I think that's just the generic, you know, definition would be, go back to the dictionary, so we don't have walls or fences defined, but usually they're put together in the ordinance as well as defenses, when we address in other provisions.
Case in point, I know of a wall over in Atlanta National that was built this past winter along Providence, or New Providence Road. It's actually a wall, it's not fence. It's about 10 or 12 feet high. Where are we going to address situations like that? Where are we going to allow them?
That, I believe, Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, that went to the BZA.
Yeah, that was a BZA, that's why it was an exception. They asked for that exception at the time, so, but it does, if you go to...
What do they call it, a wall or a fence?
It's a wall. In additional provisions, the RZ 1219, if you go to page 2, on number 5, fence and walls shall not exceed the height of eight feet from grade in residential districts. Column and ornament heights shall not exceed the maximum fence wall height of three feet. And then we start finding out all the things that Kathy just talked about.
So you're saying we treat walls and fences like this one thing? As far as this ordinance goes?
Where it can go, yes.
And then if they want to do something different from this, like this perhaps case, went through the variance process?
Right, and if it's opaque, which a wall would be, obviously, it's going to need vegetated screening.
Is that what's going to happen over in that case on New Providence?
Yeah, they just planted all that stuff this last weekend.
Do you remember what they were required for the eight-month property, if they had to plant vegetation? Yeah, they had to plant vegetation, yes.
Yeah, they've just planted most of it, finally.
Yes, sir?
A question with regards to the barbed wire that you mentioned. So so long as it has an agricultural use, I'm just thinking about if he's a property that's up off of Freemanville in the north end, that has horses in there, but is on the right-ofway as well, they're not going to have to take that down and put up a three-board fence based on that?
Right, I mean, it would just be a non-conforming use, and if lightning came along and, or tornado came along and tore it all down, then when they rebuilt, they would have to rebuild consistent with this code. Any more questions? So I hope we've responded to the concerns, to give some flexibility, but constraints in a sense, to maintain that four-board horse fence type of ambiance, but be reasonable about when it should be used or not.
I think it did, and I appreciate y'all looking at it.
Good.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
Councilmember Hewitt.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to our next item. Suti, if you would call that item.
Next item is discussion of RZ 1302, to amend Chapter 64 zoning ordinance, Article 1 in general, Section 64-1 definitions. Ms. Kathy Field.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've already covered that. We're onto the form-based code.
Will do discussion of RZ 1303, to delete Article 7, Division 5A Deerfield Plan of the Highway 9 overlay district, and concurrently adopt a new Article 20, Deerfield Highway 9 Form-Based Code. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, as you know, we completed the Deerfield, the Route 9 Deerfield LCI plan on April 23, 2012. Subsequent to that, we began the initiative to put a form-based code with a transfer of development rights section onto this area, so that we could use the new overlay zone to implement the plan. This has gone through a significant public review process. We had a stakeholder committee that worked with us. We had several community meetings. In addition, it went through a joint meeting of the design review board and the planning commission, and then on to a meeting of the planning commission for their review and approval, and then on to you tonight for your information and update. We have with us tonight the two consultants that helped us on this project, Caleb Brassico from the firm of TSW, who did the actual coding, the form-based code, and we also have with us Rick Preetz, our TDR expert, who is here tonight to explain to you the TDR section of this overlay ordinance. So with that, I would like to start with Caleb, I believe, who is going to run through with you the major elements of this form-based code for the Deerfield area. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you very much for allowing me to present this evening. As Kathy mentioned, I have been working with the greater Deerfield community for about six months now in developing this form-based code. And for those of you who may remember, we've used a process that is very similar to what we did for the Crab Apple Form-Based Code about nine months ago or so. We started with looking at the existing zoning in the Deerfield area, looking very carefully at what the current districts allowed, what projects were permitted by right, and then very importantly, what kind of private covenants existed in this area. As you know, when Deerfield was developed, there were a whole layer of private covenants that were also created that will remain in perpetuity, that zoning needed to reflect and respect in the planning process. In doing that, we also looked, sorry, is that me here up front? In doing that, we also looked at how we could take the template of the SMART code and do something that was very different from the sort of small-town village feel of Crab Apple. In this case, really focused on how we can encourage some of the higher-density mixed-use development envisioned in the LCI plan. To that end, we identified the transect zones, which you should be very familiar with from Crab Apple, determined that we would be using the T2 for areas that were intended to stay rural, T3, T4, T5, and T6 for higher-intensity development areas, and then also identified a few cases where subdivisions were partially in the LCI study area, and we gave those special district zoning per the framework. So upon doing that, you can see very clearly that essentially, this form-based code focuses the highest intensity development in what is currently the pink or O&amp;I properties on the bottom right within the Deerfield area. That is the area that we've recommended to rezone to T6, which is a fairly high-intensity mixed-use district. For those areas a bit further out from Deerfield, and by that, I mean the commercial properties along State Route 9, and then some of the multifamily properties north of Web Road, we've coded those, T5 and T5 Limited, the only difference there being that the T5 is general commercial permission, the T5 Limited is fairly restrictive in that. And then finally, those areas at the perimeter, along Cogburn Road or portions of Western Web Road, we have proposed zoning T2, T3, and T4, essentially looking at what the current zoning entitlements in those communities were, and finding the appropriate SMART code district that makes sense. As part of that, obviously, we prepared a fairly detailed form-based code using a variety of sources. As Kathy mentioned, we worked very closely with stakeholders, we had several public meetings, very, very deliberate and intensive review process with planning commission staff. They have reviewed the code before you, and they are in supportive of it. And then finally, technical analysis with the city departments and the planning staff. The version that you have before you this evening is structurally, as I mentioned, very similar to Crab Apple. We felt that it was important for city staff to have common language to use, and didn't want them to have one set of definitions in Crab Apple and one set in Deerfield. But I would like to emphasize that there are a lot of fundamental differences between Crab Apple and this Deerfield code. And with deference to your time, I'd like to focus really on what those differences are tonight, rather than going through everything that is the same. And there is quite a bit that is the same, in terms of laying out statements of intent that, in this case, talk about the LCI plan, a placability, which again, reference that, and a set of processes that are absolutely identical to those processes set forth in the Crab Apple code. But there are also some very different things, particularly in the beginning of the code. If you think about Crab Apple and you think about Deerfield, you'll recognize that the Deerfield area today is much more heavily developed, and it has a lot of what I'll call auto-oriented corridors that are fairly wide roadways. We had to create a special provision in this particular code that accounts for that, and so we created what we call A and B grid streets. This essentially identifies which streets in the community are more important for pedestrian orientation and which are less important. It sounds fairly complicated, but at the end of the day, what it means is that, for example, private streets that run through parking lots, or the various apartment communities you have in the Deerfield area, would be B grid, they're really not the most walkable corridors. Well, things like State Route 9, Web Road, Morris Road would be A grids, meaning that they're going to be held to a bit higher standard of design and characteristic. The other thing that is very different about this particular community, as I've alluded to, is the overall character of the regulating plan. And as you may remember, the regulating plan is essentially a subset of the zoning map that talks about how the specific requirements of this form-based code apply to Deerfield. And so we mapped things that were called for in the LCI. For example, creation of a greenway network throughout the community, the creation of certain public park spaces along creeks, and then very importantly, the creation of some additional street connectivity if and when development occurs in the future. This is mapped in the regulating plan, it is a mandatory requirement for redevelopment, and it's something that we hope will be a critical piece in taking that LCI vision and making it a reality. We also spent a lot of time in this area thinking about what public standards were. And as a recap, public standards essentially refer to what kind of streetscape treatment do we give to the various public roads in the area? This was fun, because we had private covenants to deal with, we had the State Route 9 overlay to deal with, and then we had visions of the LCI plan to address. And so what we did is we developed specific standards for every existing roadway in here that are consistent with their covenants and compatible with the LCI vision. We incorporated bike lanes and sidewalks and pedestrian facilities where possible, and then, as I mentioned, we mapped certain civic spaces or green spaces that existed in the community. A couple of things that we also did here, very relevant to what you just talked about, is we incorporated with some slight enhancements, if you will, the current requirements for landscape strips and fences on certain corridors in the area. We also required those on certain streets and not on others as part of the initiative. Article 4 of the code talks about what happens on each lot. Because Deerfield is very built-out today, we created some graphics that showed how existing non-conforming buildings and uses could be retrofitted, if you will, over the long term to be compatible with the LCI vision and compatible with the code. This was something new that was very important for this area. We also incorporated the sort of standard form-based code terminology regarding the shape of buildings, how buildings sit on their lot, what are the widths of the lot and the like, and then very importantly, some special provisions for State Route 9. And what were those provisions for State Route 9? Well, despite the LCI plan calling for making State Route 9 a lot more walker-friendly than it is today, the reality of the situation is that we do have a lot of big buildings that are set back very far from the street and are not going to go anywhere, anywhere soon. And so what we needed to do for State Route 9 was to create zoning language that would allow those buildings to remain and remain in operation, and we essentially took the language in the current overlay and beefed it up relevant to that corridor. And then finally, Article 4 talks about the building form, the building function, all of different permitted uses. Again, we made a very deliberate effort to avoid downzoning, so when we created that regulating plan, which really allocates the transect zones, we made sure that we were not taking away anyone's property rights. That said, we did do a couple of things that we knew were very important to council and very important to the stakeholders. One is that, given the history of apartment plans in this area, we felt it was very important to enhance what the requirements would be for city council approving apartments. We recognized as planners that growing the tax base is extremely important, so we in fact, created some very strict standards relevant to how apartments could be provided. One of those standards is that they can only occur in this T5 and 6 area, which is again, Deerfield and Highway 9, but in addition to that, they can only be approved by a use permit, and as part of a mixed-use setting. So if you were going to do apartments, you would have to do a substantial amount of other uses within that in order to make it something that isn't a drain on the city of Milton tax base. In addition, through a concurrent ordinance, which we worked with the city on, we created some very detailed use permit standards that the city council and the planning commission can refer to when considering apartments. These use permit standards talk about things like laundry hookups, like amount of open space, like amount of storage space, all of the things that we felt were really important to ensuring that if and when council approves apartments, they're going to be approving the highest caliber apartments that can be done. Now, one thing that is not in the code, and I would like to put before you this evening, based on some staff comments we received very recently, is that we might also want to think about making townhomes or row houses a use permit. As we thought about all of the ways that projects within this community could identify loopholes, if you will, in the code, we determined, Kathy and I, that is, that it would be theoretically possible, if townhomes were not a use permit, for someone to come in, say they were building townhomes, and then to rent them out. So my recommendation to council would be that, based on your directive, we can update this code, we can make townhomes in the core areas also subject to a use permit, and similar provisions for being part of a mixed-use development, if that's something that you feel is important. I feel that a concern is that if we don't do that, someone could come in, say they're building townhomes, and then the tax base considerations are really not met, because they've taken a commercial property and converted it completely to residential. So I'd like your feedback from that at the end of the presentation, if possible. And then finally, we also spent a lot of time talking about building height. Essentially, today, there is a two-story height limit within the State Route 9 overlay, and some slightly higher height limits within the current Deerfield area. We, in the discussion with stakeholders, determined that that two-story height limit was not advisable for most of the area over the long term, and so what we did is we proposed that zones T2, T3, and T4 allow three-story buildings, zone T4 open and T5 allow four-story buildings, and then T6 allow much higher buildings, which I'll talk about in a moment. But we did recommend, based on stakeholder input, that we keep a two-story height limit for the area north of the Stone Creek Church, which is so indicated on the regulating plan. The residents up there, the property owners up there that we talked to, and the fact that the school is up there, all felt that that would be a good transition from the lower density in that community to the higher density. Now, speaking of higher density, probably the most discussed item of this entire code was, in fact, the height limits in the areas where we are today. The LCI plan talked about creating a transition in density from Highway 9 up to Georgia 400, but was somewhat nonspecific about what that meant. We then looked at what the current zoning entitlements were in this area, both with the city of Alpharetta and in the city of Milton, and as you can see on the map in front of you, it's all over the place. You have some four stories, some seven stories, some six stories permitted when this was part of Fulton County in the area we are today. Along Winward Parkway in the city of Alpharetta, it goes up to 10 floors, and then across Georgia 400, in the city of Alpharetta, it actually goes up to 20 floors. So we presented this data and these current... So we presented this data and these current by right zoning entitlements to the stakeholder committee. We had a lot of discussion with them in light of a lot of the other elements of the form-based code and determined that the way we were going to deal with height in this most high-intensity part of the code was as follows. We were going to take that T6 area, which is, again, only Deerfield proper, and we were going to say that, as a general rule, buildings would be 16 floors east of Morris Road, and then they would step down to 12 floors where we are today, and then they would step down to four floors within the T5 properties along Highway 9. And so in order to do that, we created an amendment to the regulating plan, and we also created some text, actually, within the form-based code that addresses that. That relationship of height, if you will, will achieve the LCI vision of going from lower to higher and really will allow the City of Milton to grow the tax base, but in a fairly, fairly compact area that can be well-served by future facilities envisioned through the LCI plan. And then finally, in Article four, we incorporated, as I mentioned, the equestrian fencing requirements. We incorporated all of the city's current requirements for parking as part of that initiative and access management. We incorporated and enhanced a little bit the city's requirements for landscaping, the city's requirements for lighting, and the city's current requirements for sign ordinances. We also took the current city requirements for architecture and substantially enhanced them based on the feedback from both the stakeholders, from the planning commission, and from the Development Design Review Board. We initially had proposed no change to this area. We heard very strongly that we want 360-degree architecture in this community. We don't want the backs to look worse than the front or the side. And so what we did is we came up with some pretty enhanced architectural standards that do not mandate a specific style, per se, but are definitely going to improve the architectural quality within this form-based code area. We had initially only done that for commercial, mixed-use, and potential apartment buildings. Again, apartments would be subject to your approval by use permit, but we heard from the planning commission and stakeholders that we needed to expand that to include townhomes and single-family. And so we went and did that as well. And then finally, the final element of the code is Articles 5 and 6, which, again, in keeping with Crab Apple, are just the maps and the standard tables, and then, finally, the definitions. So with that said, I would love to answer any questions you might have on the code. We feel, as consultants, that it is a document that has been very well-vetted. We've made at least four changes. We have another sort of working set of architectural changes based on the planning commission, and with your support this evening, we're prepared to get you a final draft tomorrow morning to be put in the packet for next week. Thank you.
Questions? Karen?
I have one question, maybe a question of staff. We keep hearing about the stakeholder group. How was that stakeholder group determined? Because I'm hearing from some people who felt like it wasn't a representative group to include the residents of the area also.
What we usually do with our stakeholders is we try to identify, first of all, major landowners. We try to identify representatives from HOAs. We do a significant amount of outreach. We've asked, in the past, members of the city council to recommend people to us as well. We look to all the boards and commissions for them to send a representative. And basically, people who have been active in the community who are on our list, we try to engage as well. So the idea is to try and bring in people who have knowledge of the area. And we really sort of beat the drum, so to speak, to try and bring those people to the table. There is no science to it, in a sense. We just really try to bring in as many, and we try to keep it around 12 to 14 in that range, but try to make a representative group of both businessmen, owners, landowners, HOAs, in that type.
Any else have a question? Bill? Lot of information here to digest. Good job putting this together.
Thank you.
I'm looking at Article 4.12.2, and as it deals with lighting, of course, I haven't had time to go through it. Could you give a brief description or your intent as to what type of lighting is going to be incorporated through this whole overlay?
Give me a second to read if it's been a while. I do know that one of the things that we did in here was we require all developments to submit a lighting plan to the community development director. As part of that lighting plan, it lays out provisions to ensure that the site is well-lit. At the same time, we did want to talk a little bit about how light fixtures could, how bright certain fixtures could be. The Highway 9 overlay spoke to that, so we incorporated that in provision 412.2. We did prohibit sodium vapor neon-colored lights, and I don't believe, I don't believe that we incorporated any specific brands here, like we did in Crab Apple, because it, let's see here. Yeah, there are no specific brands mentioned. I don't.
Okay, it's not proprietary, but are you going to, is there anything in here that specifies a typical fixture style?
Let's see here. Actually, yes, you're correct, Robin. We do have in Section 412-18, and I stand corrected, thoroughfare, parking, and walkway lights and poles shall be Philip Lumec, Doma series, and black or similar, or as approved by the Design Review Board, within these lights, they shall include skirts and aprons. That is taken verbatim from the Highway 9 overlay. I did not spec that specifically. So we just took what was in the current code and included it in that respect.
Is the height of these fixtures going to be standard, then, or are they variable?
I am not sure.
Is that something that we need to address?
I think we can certainly do that. We can pull that brand and see if it has a certain height limit. So I think that's a great suggestion. I'll do that for the portion. Typically, pedestrian lights are from 12 to 15 feet. Cobra head lights can be, you know, the fuller parking lot lights can be a bit higher. Does council have a preference to that, or would they like to defer to my research?
I mean, you're going to say that the lighting plan has to be reviewed in terms of spillover, they have to be cut-off fixtures, so is that true? As part of the requirement, that the project's lighting plan has to be approved?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, well, then, I would think that would, that's how you, I mean, the height of the light, depending on the type of fixture, is what creates the coverage. So, you know, it's not a particular height. I mean, you might have a maximum height, like no higher than 30 or 35 feet. Usually, cobra heads are like 30 to 35-foot mounting height. So, you know, tying that to the fact that it has to be reviewed, especially for spillover, cutoffs are going to, you know, that's the dark sky requirement. Then, I think as long as you have it under review and maybe set a maximal height, because, you know, I have seen lights that, well, you see the lights at the interstates that are, you know, 100 feet high, there's big, or 200 feet high, whatever, a maximal height, but not really, other than that, I think that would be sufficient.
And I stand corrected again. Again, the lighting is the one part that I took verbatim from the State Route 9. Section 412-16, or 412-6, I should say, right above there, does say that poles must be between 12 and 28 feet. So I feel that's.
Found it.
That's compatible.
Matt?
Just one question. Obviously, because we're dealing with TDRs in this area, the baseline height is only two stories, right, through the whole area? And if they want to go above that, and it says that in Section 1.7.6, so I'm just getting clarification on that, because they want to go above that two floors, that two story heights, don't they have to get a TDR in order to do that?
That is not the intent. Let me find the specific language here. 1.7.6?
Am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, what that says is, you may remember, I pointed out that there was a two-story height limit zone. When Rick talks about TDRs, you cannot transfer density into that area.
Right. So that's a maximum of the two stories?
That is correct. In that area, north of Stone Creek Church, you cannot transfer density into that. So TDR within Deerfield can go everywhere else, but not up there. And I believe that that is how it is worded.
Where's that coming from?
Parcels located in, within the maximum two-story height zone designated within this district shall not serve as TDR-receiving sites.
TDR, it says TDR-receiving site owners can build at or below the base densities established by COO without a use of TDRs. I guess my question is, is what is, based on, just to make sure I clarify, obviously, you've got a zone with a five-story and a four-story and a three-story. What is the base density on that? And then what can a TDR accomplish with that? Just to clarify that.
Generally speaking, T2 is one unit per acre. It's analogous to AG1, no change, and you can't transfer density to T2. T3, which we don't actually map, but we wanted to put in the code in case someone needs to use it, is three units by right, can go up to six with TDR, again, not mapped. T4, which is mapped, that would be, for example, some of the, there's that neighborhood built at the northeast quadrant of Cogburn and Webb Road. That is comparable with a T4 density. That is five units per acre by right, up to nine with TDR. And then T5, which is essentially State Route 9, is nine by right, up to 14. And then T6 is 12 by right, up to 36. And let me tell you, again, the TDR credit is not only units per acre, it's building units. So building units translates to an amount of commercial space per acre as well. So when I say 36 units per acre in T6 by TDR, that does not mean 36 acres of apartments, unless you approve it. It could mean a hotel, it could mean a fairly substantial office building. To get that number, we actually pulled, as I mentioned, every zoning application in this area. We didn't want, for example, downzone Verizon. So in determining what that number was, 12 gives them parity of what they have today. But if they wanted to upzone, if they wanted to do higher density on those properties, they'd have to buy TDR credits. That would be for office, or that would be for residential uses. Yes, ma'am?
Where does the T4 open fit in? What's the difference in the T4, T4 open, and T5? Because it looks like T4 open has some of the, some of both?
Yep.
Is it hybrid? It doesn't know what it is?
I mentioned this was community-based. One of the things that we made was, we have some properties west of State Route 9 on Webb Road, the south side of Webb Road, that are zoned C1 today. We had initially proposed just making those, you know, general commercial, if you will, which would have been a T5 district. Based on the stakeholder input, we created what we call T4 open for those areas. What it really means is you can build something that looks residential, but you can have commercial uses in it. That is the only difference for that area. The LCI plan and the stakeholders we talked to felt that that might be a good location one day for senior housing, and that by creating that zone in there, you would enable it.
But right now, it's allowed to have either office or commercial without those restrictions, correct?
That's correct.
Is that a downzoning of this, those particular parcels?
No, it actually wouldn't be, because they have a two-story height limit today, and we're proposing a four-story height limit.
Okay.
Or a four-story height limit as part of that T4 open provision.
So we're just changing the aesthetics of it, but giving them a little bit more height?
We're changing the aesthetics. Again, we're focusing on form, but in terms of use, they have a bit more flexibility than they would today. Because they also can't do residential today, but they would be getting residential permission as part of T4 open.
But they couldn't do residential as far as apartments without coming and still getting a use permit?
That's correct. Apartments and, based on your feedback, townhomes will all be subject to your approval.
My feedback is townhomes need to be included in there as a use permit.
Does the rest of council have an opinion on that?
Same here.
A couple of other things, and like I said, we just got this, so I know that we hadn't had a chance to go through it all. I know in Crab Apple, we had some issues as far as where things like daycares and schools and churches and all that are allowed, just because there are certain things that aren't allowed close to these things. Do we have that same kind of restrictions in here that they would require a use permit so that we don't end up?
Yes, that is one of the areas where we worked very closely with staff. If you go to Table 10, you will see that childcare centers within T2, T3, T4 are by use permit. Within T5 and T6, where they're currently allowed by right today, they are allowed by right in the future.
I still think they need a use permit regardless of where they go, personally, because you can put them in and you could totally, it could prevent a lot of other things from going in, you know, close to it. So I think that I would just make it consistent that they need a use permit for that kind of facility.
As part of that discussion of sort of other residential uses, we also did create some provisions for assisted living, also within those T4 open, T5, and T6 zones, and that's something that's very different from Crab Apple. It will allow those kind of uses within this area. Bless you. Yes, sir?
Just flip by it, I can't locate it right now. Section 48 relates to stormwater management facilities. Most of the development, a good portion of the development here in Deerfield right now uses a common detention facility. Is there any way that we can continue or use those existing facilities to accommodate future development in the area, if they're large enough?
That would, that's typically not a zoning-related issue. I think, I agree that that would be, that is not prevented by the zoning. I think that would be a very good part of the vision. I don't know if, Kathy, are you familiar with how the stormwater is handled? Is there a provision that prohibits that, that you know of?
I really don't. I'd have to check with our staff, but we could certainly look into that. That's a great point.
I know it'd be a shame to see another 50 developments here with a pond in front of each one of them.
Right. If council would like, again, it's not legally binding because zoning versus another section of the code, we could put, we could emphasize in here that your desire is for that and say that shared facilities are provided, subject to or pursuant to approval, whatever the language is, it could at least say that council encourages that.
I think a lot of it depends on hydrology studies.
Sure, certainly.
Obviously, whether there's capacity and whether it's the right flow, whether it's all very engineering-based.
To the greatest extent possible, I'd like to see continued or expanded use of the existing facilities.
Yeah, encourage use of the existing.
One thing we could also look at, too, as we've done for structured parking, is that we have offered bonuses, in terms of, we have offered TDRs credits, TDR credits, if someone would put in a structured parking deck, for instance. So we could include, within the TDR part, if someone was doing shared stormwater, that they would be eligible for additional credits, which would be an incentive. So that's something we could look into, if that's something that you had some interest in.
I think that's worthwhile looking into. Yeah. Okay. All right. Anybody else? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lot of work.
Thank you, Caleb.
I'd next like to introduce Rick Preetz. He was here with us for Crab Apple. He's our TDR expert. He's here to give you the.
Next, I'd like to introduce Rick Preetz. He was here with us for Crab Apple, he's our TDR expert. He's here to give you the presentation of the transfer development rights, which will be a section embedded within the overlay ordinance, just as we did with Crab Apple. We'll treat this the same way here. Thank you. Rick?
Thank you, Kathy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Caleb said, I will also be talking about how the TDR components of the proposed Deerfield code are very similar to the TDR components of the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. And the idea here is not only to reduce complication, but also to create a stronger market. And that is in the overall effort to implement both the conservation as well as the development goals of Deerfield and the city as a whole. So I apologize for one minute's worth of background on TDR in general, but just to refresh on some of the buzzwords. The area where you're trying to conserve land are called the sending areas. The areas where additional development is appropriate are called the receiving areas. And in both areas, this is a voluntary program, very important to keep that in mind. The developers, the, excuse me, the sending area landowners can simply refuse or decline to use the TDR option and to use the underlying zoning as they see fit. However, if they choose to, if it's in their plans to conserve their property, reduce development potential, or even deed the property over as a park, they can do that through the TDR program. And under one of the options, the simpler of the two options, they record an easement. That allows TDRs, transferable development rights, to be created as stipulated in the code. The sale of those motivates those property owners to participate. Equally so, in the receiving area, the developers have a choice. They can build up to baseline density, or they can exceed that baseline density, but only by using TDRs. And so here we have, did I skip over something? No, okay. The, what we're trying to accomplish here in Deerfield is to, obviously, create those smart growth developments in the receiving areas, but also to accomplish the calls for green, green space, parks, trails, and open space that are called for not only in the Deerfield plan, but citywide. So I mentioned before that there are two types of, of sending areas. I think I skipped over a slide here, just to, yeah, sorry. How does a property owner identify a, whether their property qualifies as a sending area, for example? Well, in the, within the Deerfield area, it's actually mapped out. The sending sites are the T2 zones, as well as the open space zones extend out along two frontages that I'll, I'll discuss in a minute. As well as that, there are green spaces and civic spaces identified in the Deerfield plan. Those all qualify as, as sending sites. Citywide, a property can qualify if it's in the AG1 zone, and if it has certain qualities that are called for preservation in your comprehensive plan, meaning environmentally sensitive areas, rural character, and open space. And also, a property would qualify if it is identified in an adopted plan as a park or a greenway. So I've been talking about these two different scenarios that a property owner can go through. The first one is open space option, and it merely means that the property owner continues to own the land, the underlying fee, but they are willing to and voluntarily agree to reduce their development potential. To qualify, you have to have a five-acre site. It has to be outside of the Deerfield area, it has to be a five-acre site. Within Deerfield, it has to be a two-acre site. There's also a two-road frontage that I'll mention in a minute, where a two-acre minimum lot size also applies. Within that area, in order to become a sending site, you must record a perpetual easement that reduces the density to a maximum of one dwelling in a per parcel, or per 25 acres, whichever is greater. The other scenario is where a property owner wants to actually deed the property over to the city for parkway, trail, or civic space purposes. There, the minimum site has to be one acre. Now, what does a property owner get in return for this? This is the same formula that's used in Crab Apple. One TDR per unconstrained acre that's placed under easement. One TDR per four constrained acres placed under easement. And a constrained acre would be standing water, a stream, stream buffer, and so forth, undevelopable land, plus a bit of a bonus for larger lots. If you, if that property owner wants to actually deed the property over to the city, there is a kicker factor of 1.5 if that area is actually designated in a plan as civic space, or 1.25 if it's designated in a plan for park or greenway purposes. I won't go into the math on this example, but this just shows how a 25-acre site with eight acres of constrained land would result in 23 TDRs. If that property owner, instead of retaining fee ownership, wanted to actually deed that property over to the city as a park or a greenway, you'd multiply by 1.25 for that added bonus. Now, here are the receiving areas in, within Deerfield. The T3 through the T6, they all have baselines. Developers can build up to baseline with no TDR requirement. Once they exceed baseline, the code spells out how much additional density they can achieve, but only by TDR. Now, one of the things that's different is that you gain four bonus units, bonus building units, per TDR in Deerfield. So here's an example in the T4 zone. The baseline is five building units per acre. The maximum is nine building units per acre. So with one TDR per acre, a developer could get four additional building units per acre through the TDR program. Remember also that this converts to non-residential floor area. So with one TDR, they could get 9,000 square feet of additional floor area in a non-residential building using the TDR option. I've been alluding to a few permutations here, and one of them is that, in fact, there's, we're responding to neighborhood concerns in two areas. Caleb has already mentioned one of those, and that is the far north of the corner of the property where you have the two-acre building height limit. That is also constrained, it's a no-go zone, as a TDR-receiving area. Those properties cannot act as TDR-receiving areas. Also, as well as the open space sites within Deerfield, having a two-acre minimum to qualify, there are two frontages outside of the Deerfield area, which we're proposing as also qualifying for two-acre rather than five-acre minimum lot sizes. And that's because there are many properties along these two frontages that don't quite meet the five-acre minimum that would qualify them as TDR sending sites. And yet, the neighborhood finds many of those properties to meet the qualities that they're looking for in order to preserve rural character. In other words, they might be two-acre sites that actually have a nice horse pasture, or something of that nature on them. And those, those two frontages are Bethany Road from Hopewell Road east of the county line, and Cogburn Road from Devonchar Farms Way, south to Bethany Road. Can't really see it from this aerial, but if you, if you could zoom in on a lot of those properties, you'd see what we were talking about in terms of rural character on those two frontages. So that is my presentation. Entertaining, any questions or comments that you may have?
Kansas City, we just purchased property at Bell Memorial Park, which is property that could have been, if we didn't purchase it, could have been developed by right. Can the city sell TDRs? We're going to use it for park. Can the city sell the TDRs of that property?
The ordinance does speak to that, yes. And, but I believe it says that it's after the ordinance is adopted. After that point, the, the city, if it owns property that qualifies as a sending site, it too can sever the TDRs and bank them and sell them. Maybe I should check that. I'm pretty sure, though, it says after the ordinance is adopted.
Second question, and I guess this may be for Kathy. Are we currently, have there been activity as far as TDRs are concerned?
Well, we've had two-
This would be Crab Apple right now.
Yes, it'd be Crab Apple. And, and we've, just about six weeks ago, we had our first public information meeting about TDRs. It took our attorneys some time to put together all the, the legal documentation that's going to be required. So we rolled it out about six weeks ago. We've had a lot of questions since. Rick was in town today, so we asked him to do another public information meeting earlier this afternoon on it. So, so we are getting an awful lot of questions. We, we haven't put together a deal, so to speak, but developers are asking about it, and landowners are asking about it. And I guess that's as best we could hope for at this point.
Right now, they're sort of kind of feeling the whole process out.
Exactly right.
And there is interest?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
Bert?
What's the definition difference between parks and greenways and civic space? I understand the parks and greenways, but what is civic space? What can it be? Can, can it be a city hall, or?
Civic space is a classification given, given to a site that is of such importance that it actually, it actually has higher, we want, we want it, we want to really encourage property owners to, to actually create sending sites on those areas. There are certain sites that are just ideal as park or even public square-type sites that would qualify for that.
I can give you a good example, and the Crab Apple was that we, I identified on the Crab Apple map, the pond along Mayfield Road, just east of the intersection with Charlotte, there, that pond. We really felt that whole area, or part of that area, would, would be wonderful as a city park, open space area. And so we incentivized it, in the sense that we defined it as a civic space, which meant that if that should be forthcoming to us, that there would, there would be bonus credits that would be achieved from there. So it was an incentivization, incentivization for particular areas that we thought were particularly sensitive to the city.
Thank you.
Karen?
I just want to make sure I understand. You were, in your example, you said you need one TDR in certain areas to go from five units per acre to nine units per acre. I'm assuming that that would be, you would need one TDR per acre to get you that. So if you had a 50-acre site, you would need 50 TDRs to go from five to nine on the whole site?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not just one T- It's not a one-size-fits-all, you need that per acre, one TDR per acre?
That's correct.
Okay. That makes sense, but.
And it's, it's, it's building units, right?
It's in building units, yes, so that-
Building units.
And a building unit is either one residential unit or 2,250 square feet of non-residential floor area.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Sounds good, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, city, if you don't mind calling our next time?
Next item is discussion of RZ 1304. To amend Article 7, Division 5, State Route 9, Overlay District, Section 641069A, Regulations Applicability. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an anticipation of, should you approve the Form-Based Code next week, this would follow. And what this does is a, sort of a cleanup in that, if you look, you'll see there is a, a map in your packet that shows a purple area. And, and there is currently the Route 9 overlay zone in place. If Deerfield should be approved by you next week, we would then subtract the Deerfield area from the Route 9 overlay. And what is remaining of the Route 9 overlay is reflected on this map in the purple area. Deerfield did not match perfectly the Route 9 overlay. So when, when one gets approved, it needs to subtract out of the Route 9 overlay, and the remainder remains intact. That's what this means.
I just have one question. Can't we come up with a better name than the Route 9 overlay? I mean, there's got to be something that sounds better than State Route 9, just, I mean, just. Bert, that was supposed to be your job two years ago. Yeah, it's got to be something that's better than State Route 9 overlay. We call it Cambridge now, or something.
Any other questions?
No objections.
Yeah. It just sounds.
Oh, okay.
I found that the State Route 9 overlay just doesn't sound real glamorous.
I, I second that.
Yeah, maybe staff can look into what type to-
We will. It, it may, it may go away after we do the, the Route 9 North planning study. If, if that should move forward, and eventually, there is a new zoning put in place for that, that would take up most of this area. And so at that point, we could probably reconfigure.
And it would be called something other than the Route 9 North?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah, there probably won't be very much left of the Route 9 overlay, but we'll work that out in Phase 2, so to speak, I guess. But, so noted.
Our sixth item is discussion of RZ 1305. To adopt a new use permit within Article 9, Division 5, Miscellaneous Uses, Section 641839, Apartments. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you very much. If, you remember when Caleb was, during his presentation, he made reference to use permits for apartments, which we established in the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. We did not at that time, however, establish the standards by which use permits should be granted. So this is our recommendation in terms of what those standards for apartments should be, so that if indeed a use permit came before you for apartments, the, these are the standards that we would recommend that, that you use in terms of granting those, that use.
Are you going to add townhomes to that?
Yes, at the, how will we do that, Robin?
We have to have another, we have to advertise for another use permit. We can't.
But- Yeah.
Has to be advertised.
But, but we, we will use this for both the Crab Apple and the Deerfield Form-Based Code. So it, it will be good for, for both overlays for apartments. And then we'll, we'll do the same thing for the, for the townhomes as it relates to Deerfield.
Okay, anybody comments on that? Okay with it? Next?
I mean, could you just classify it as residential for, for lease or something? Lump everything together, apartments, townhomes that are being leased, everything?
When you're doing lease, you really don't get into ownership. When you're doing a land use, it doesn't really speak to ownership. It just, it's talking about the particular land use.
Apartments could be, you know, high-rise apartments as opposed to garden apartments?
Or they could be condominiums. I mean, an apartment is, is a multi-family type of development, whether it's, and we usually associate it with rentals, but it could be condominiums. I mean, it's, it's just, it's a form of use, and the same with townhomes.
So the definition means a building which contains three or more dwellings, either attached to the side, above, or below another unit. The term apartment also refers to a dwelling that is attached to a non-residential building, dwelling multifamily, so.
Bert?
On this, on the Section B3, looks like the Planning Commission indicated that we ought to put licensed professional landscaper in there. They're in the landscaping license. I mean, obviously, it'd be a business license, but.
It's not regulated by the State Board of License.
It's, it's not, so you, would you recommend that we delete that, then?
I mean, I certainly would like them to be a, a legal entity, you know, wherever they may be, but there isn't a.
There isn't such a thing.
How to handle that, but.
So no one qualifies, you're telling us this for that?
Okay, we will certainly reflect that in the next version that you see. That's a good catch, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Bill, you had a question?
It was Bert addressed it.
Anything else? All right, just move on to our next item.
Our final item is discussion of RZ 1307, to amend Article 19, Crab Apple Form-Based Code, Article 5, Standards and Tables, Table 9, Specific Function and Use. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you. The, the current Crab Apple Form-Based Code and the proposed Deerfield Highway 9 Form-Based Code contemplate assisted living convalescent home, personal care home, nursing home, and hospices to be permitted by right within certain transect zones. After we adopted the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, staff realized that these uses were not included in Table 9. So what this does is it sort of cleans that up in a sense, in that it puts into Table 9 for the Crab Apple Form-Based Code on Page 5, those uses, which are in the text, but did not make it into the table. And that's assisted living, convalescent home, personal care home, nursing home, and hospice. And it allows them by right in three of the, in the, it would be the T4, the T4 open, and the T5. It was an inconsistency that we found that we wanted to clean up.
My only question is, should they be allowed by right in the T4? Should they be allowed by, with a use permit in the T4? I mean, we don't allow hotels in the T4. We don't, hostels have to have a use permit. Apartments have to have a use permit. I'm just wondering whether or not they ought to be allowed by right, or if they ought to have the use permit in a T4-type zoning, because it is a little, because I mean, some of those assisted living homes are, I mean, they're quite large.
They could be impactful, there's no doubt about it.
They're very impactful, so I mean, I almost feel like they ought to be, as much as we need them, I think a use permit might be more proper for a T4 than just being outright allowed.
But to clarify, they, the structure still couldn't be any bigger than anything else unless they had the TDRs that were purchased, right?
Right, yes.
So the use, the structure wouldn't look any different with regard to whatever it was. It would just be what it is based on the code, but the use is really the question of whether or not we want to have control over that.
That's right, that's right. Did you want Caleb to respond to that as well, or?
Looks like he wants to.
Sure.
Always a question.
Would you reframe the question?
My question was that should the assisted living convalescent homes be allowed by right in T4, or should they require a use permit like, like other things do? I know we don't allow hotels in, in the T4, and apartments have to have a use permit. I'm just wondering what, hostels have to have a use permit, whether or not they ought to have, require a use permit, or just be allowed by right in a T4?
My, my thought would be, and, and this, this is reflected, that, that since you're allowing a certain amount of townhomes, if you will, and, and remember, T4 is sort of the, the neighborhood where we allow things like corner stores and those provisions, that it would make sense for, given the, the small building size, that you could have a smaller facility in there.
So as long as they kept the small building size.
Yeah, it has to comply with that. It has to be a very residential-looking facility. It can't have parking out in front. It's going to have to fit in with the neighborhood. We felt that it would be something that would be compatible.
I've just seen some pretty big assisted living things that are, you know, they're not like they used to be. There's some of them that are pretty.
That's true.
Pretty massive, but I guess maybe the size requirement would prevent.
It would have to be three floors, which is compatible in height to the homes next door. It would actually, by default, also have a maximum lot size, where you could only have a certain, a maximum amount of it on the street. So I think it would be a pretty innocuous building.
Is anybody else agree with that, or?
I do, because you're saying basically the form-based zone, that the form will kind of regulate keeping that massive structure in this particular transect from occurring. Now, in a five or six where it's allowed, you know, much, much larger.
It could be, although in Crab Apple in particular, there's a maximum three-story building height everywhere.
Right.
The buildings in Crab Apple can be wider, so if you think of where the old blind dog is, you know, that's a pretty wide building, and you could actually do that. You know, you could theoretically have an assisted living building that was that wide on that one little block of.
And thinking too, I realize this is Crab Apple, I'm thinking too, for Deerfield, and those other transects then couldn't go much larger, a more massive type structure more would fit into, but the form would be basically be able to kind of regulate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you. Caleb, Kathy. Looks like that was our last item. Anybody else have anything to ask? Sure, Bill?
Kathy. Going back in the, in this overlay district here, I haven't read through it, obviously. How are you addressing fencing in the Deerfield area?
Do you want to respond to the fencing for the Deerfield?
It's, it's the four-board fence along the major arteries.
Either parallel or cross buck.
They give a choice.
We didn't specify, you know.
Typically, they've been given a choice.
Yes, the overlay does give them a choice, but this is an opportunity, if you wanted to, to not give them the choice, we could certainly put that into the code. Because right now, you, you can do the cross, or you can do the parallel boards. And, and that's the, the Route 9 overlay. Wanted to have some diversity, wanted to, to keep the, the wood idea, but, but to give a little diversity. But again, that's certainly something that we could.
Anybody have anything?
Control.
I mean, I'm.
I think it looks hodgepodge now. I mean, and it's, I mean, I'm all for uniformity and everything, but I think it's too late to specify one now, because it's different, you know, because we've got some that are the cross buck, some with posts, some with brick columns.
Yeah, the cross buck, that's kind of city fence, you know, it's not real fence, but, you know, it's up to you guys if you want to, you know, like, like Bert said, we've got some of both. How, you know, has there been much discussion so far with applicants?
No, I think they just come to us, like, for instance, when the gas station came in, they called us very, you know, very quickly, what should we do? I said, well, it's up to you, because that's what the code says, and that's what the overlay, when we did the design guidelines, that's what the stakeholder group wanted, and that tends to be what is, they wanted a little bit of variety, not everything to be so static and exact. That was the intent, to give them a choice.
All right.
I'm out.
You know, all due respect to, you know, I kind of like, you know, especially have a little bit of diversity as long as it all kind of ties in, but that's, it's up to you guys if you want to address that, or.
Like you say, there's a mixture out there now, so.
But I do think, and I don't know what the, what the non-overlay ordinance calls for, but I know with that American Family Care, I think we required them to put wire up on their fence.
That was, I think they misconstrued the ordinance when they looked at the.
The pond.
The detention pond. They don't require.
Okay, cool.
It was their, looking at the wrong.
Okay. Okay. All right, anything else? No, we'll adjourn the meeting.